Got to speak.
I'm very upset.
You're talking every day.
Hotel so stacked.
Send them a picture and be like.
Hi, Walt.
How are you?
Buddy. Five of us, right? One.
He's wired.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedeno.
Here.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner O'Day. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Chairman Romano. Please stand to salute the flag.
Aye.
Let's leave it to the flag. United States of America. Republic of the states. One nation under God. In the visible liberation. World.
Yes. Oh, if we can have a moment of silence. Today is the 24th anniversary of the tragic horrible incident that happened for the for those first responders and for the victims that perished and also for the families that continue to this day suffering, we ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. Posting notice of resolution 1801 2025 on the county commissioners bulletin board, first floor administration building annex Jersey City, New Jersey. Copies of the above mentioned resolution have been sent to the county clerk and the editors of the Carney Observer and Star Ledger. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the caucus meeting of August 12, 2025 and the regular meeting of August 14, 2025?
Which is second.
Rodriguez Lipsky.
Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day. Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano. I'd like to turn the meeting over to administration.
Mr. Chairman, I have no additional items. Thank you.
I do have one from the commissioner's office. On your agenda, it will be listed as 33. It's endorsing a change in New Jersey state legislation to authorize automated traffic enforcement in cities of the first class and support Vision Zero goals. I need a sponsor in a second.
Second.
O'Day and Lipsky, what number?
Thirty-three.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ponte Lipsky. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day. Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner Basleys. Yes? According to the policy set by the board.
One more item up for the agenda.
Yeah, so I had an item that I handed out to my colleagues that I'm going to ask, we introduce then carry to the next meeting and then have the public safety committee. Can, you know. Review it, just creating office of Hudson County Corrections and Rehabilitation Omensmen, authorizing issuance of RP to softless qualified respondents, governing information regarding incarcerated individuals with significant medical and psychological needs. I think just for the record, I, I, I was happy with the new medical group that we brought in. I was, I was very encouraged by their presentation, very encouraged by their capacity and capability to take individuals that may have mental health issues and get them diverted out of the correctional center and correctional facility with the soon to be mental health court. Many of those individuals, based on those conversations, may never have to spend a day in the correctional center or be diverted out quickly. But I just think that based on some of the deaths that have occurred this year, it's important to, to put this in place. This was done working in close, working closely with the public defender's office. So I would just, I gave it out today, but I mean, to have for the next meeting and if you could put it on the, on your public safety committee meeting.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
According to the policy set by the Board of County Commissioners, members of the public are asked to limit their comments to five minutes when discussing agenda items and three minutes at the conclusion of the meeting for persons who submitted a written request to discuss matters of public interest. At this time, the public may address the board on any item on the agenda, only please keep your comments limited to five minutes. Are there any speakers on the agenda item only? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda?
Second.
Lopez and Sedeno.
Commissioner Ponte Lipsky. Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Come back to me.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Chairman, one moment, as a point of order, Commissioner Sefeli on the Zoom and sponsored one and seconded three others.
I'll take them all.
Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Going back to Commissioner O'Day.
Yep, I'm staying on 15B as in boy.
Okay.
And eye on the rest.
I have to stand on one, too. I'm looking for you. I'll be off for pocket talk.
Which one is it, Commissioner Basleys?
Continue, we'll come back.
Yeah.
Back to that one, okay. We have three ordinances for introduction. I, one, finance administration, bond ordinance providing for various 2025, 2026 capital improvements at and at the acquisition installation of equipment and buses for the Hudson County Schools of Technology located within the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, appropriating 1,500,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 1,500,000 bonds and notes for the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation. For introduction, Commissioner Ponte Lipsky. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced.
Bobby, I'm staying on number 13.
Thirteen?
Okay.
Okay, going back to the consent agenda, all those items with the exception of 13 for Commissioner Basleys and 15B for Commissioner O'Day. May I have a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Rodriguez. Don't we vote?
I didn't vote on it. We didn't vote on it. I held up for Commissioner Basleys.
Oh, okay.
Well, I abstained on one.
Yeah, well, he, we came back then.
I came back to it.
Okay. Yes.
Vote on it?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Mr. Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Is on the ordinance?
No, this is on the consent agenda with the minus of 15.
He voted on that.
I thought we did. I thought I had to come back and vote.
Oh, no, we all voted on it. I abstained.
We just, just on that one? Oh, I'm sorry then. Yes, okay, just on the ordinance then for the introduction.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance I, two, finance administration, bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of capital projects for fiscal year 2026, buy-in for the Hudson County Community College located within the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, appropriating $6,634,062, therefore, and authorize the issuance of $6,634,062 bonds and notes of the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation. The principal of an interest on the aggregate principal amount of which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to chapter 12 of the laws of New Jersey for 1971. Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. Ordinance I, three, roads and public property engineering, ordinance amending chapter 200, article 18 of the administrative code to regulate bus stops on Bergen Turnpike in the township of North Bergen, a county-owned roadway. Commissioner Ponte Lipsky. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. We have three ordinances for second reading. Ordinance one, A1, ordinance amending the Hudson County Administrative Code pursuant to the applicable provisions of the optional county chapter law NJSA 40:41A-1. This is the fixed time for the public hearing on this ordinance, which was introduced at the meeting of August 14, 2025, advertised as required by law, together with the notice of hearing for this time. It's been posted on the county commissioners bulletin board and made available to the general public. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? Seeing none, I ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Sedeno and Romano.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed on the final adoption? Commissioner Ponte Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day. Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance A, two, it's an ordinance amending chapter 200, article 8.3 of the administrative code to regulate parking at John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the city of Jersey City, a county-owned roadway. This is the time fixed for a public hearing on this ordinance, which was introduced at the meeting of August 14, 2025, advertised as required by law, together with the notice of the hearing for this time. It's been posted in the county commissioners bulletin board and made available to the general public. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? There being none, I'd like a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Lipsky and Sedeno.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed on the final adoption? Commissioner Ponte Lipsky. Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance A, three, roads and public property, ordinance amending chapter 200, article 27 of the administrative code to establish a traffic calming devices on Newark Street and Monroe Grove Street in the city of Hoboken. This is the time fixed for a public hearing of this ordinance, which was introduced at the meeting of August 14, 2025, advertised as required by law, together with the notice of hearing for this time. It's been posted in the county commissioners bulletin board and made available to the general public. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed on the final adoption? Commissioner Ponte Lipsky. Commissioner Basleys.
Yes.
Commissioner Sedeno.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. This concludes the items of business on today's agenda. Are there any comments from the commissioners on the business of the board?
Really?
Just a couple of comments on the resolution related to supporting the negotiations of 32BJ. Obviously, they've been a, an organization that hires local. They have a very large percentage of their, uh, membership are Hispanic. Uh, they live in Jersey City, Union City, West New York. So it's always good to help them make sure that they have a good, a good living, living wage. And then obviously on the, on the one with the Vision Zero and, and potentially being able to get speeding cameras by our schools on streets like Kennedy Boulevard, I think that's important. We once were kind of a trailblazer with red light cameras. We were able to use the funding from those fines to actually create additional traffic patrols in that, in those areas between kind of Montgomery Street or from Sip Avenue to Communipaw. Unfortunately, one Republican legislator from South Jersey decided, I don't know if he maybe got a ticket or something, he, he made it his, he made it his cause to get rid of that. It's too, it's too bad, but I would hope that having the capability to bring those cameras in to reduce speeds on streets like JFK Boulevard, especially by schools, is something to happen.
Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Are there any comments from the chief of staff to the county executive?
Good afternoon, everybody. Happy fall. I'm speaking today because I'm a bit concerned. It was, it has come to the attention of the county executive's office after the fact that there were some armed individuals this weekend on county property. And I want you all to understand that we were not notified in the county executive's office that there were armed individuals in this property. We found out through a social media post by a concerned citizen. So there's a couple of things. The county executive really, really prioritizes our parks, as you all know. We want our parks to remain safe for everyone. They should be a safe haven for most people, for all of our residents. Cars, we were not, because neither Craig nor anyone in our office was informed of this incident, we don't know who these people were. I don't know if they were actually legitimate law enforcement or not. None of us do. So we are asking the sheriff, Sheriff Sholari, and his office to remember to please, thank you all, immediately if there are another such incident. And just a little reminder about the immigrant trust directive that I believe, and this is not, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a police officer, so don't, don't yell at me if I'm wrong, but I believe the sheriff's office and all sheriff's officers have to abide by the immigrant trust directive.
Yeah.
That prohibits local law enforcement from participating in ICE civil immigration enforcement and/or also prohibits them from, from providing ICE with access to local law enforcement resources such as equipment, office space, databases, or property. If I'm wrong, somebody tell me so, but I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention because, again, we really want our parks to remain a safe haven for all Hudson County residents. And we were a little disturbed that there was such an incident this weekend that we did not know about. So just letting you all know from our perspective, please, and to the sheriff's officers, please take the message back to the sheriff for us, that we're, we're hopeful that if this should happen again, we would be called right away. Thank you.
More importantly, since a question was asked at the prior meeting about what role or the sheriff officer would play related to that, and it was made clear that they played no role related to that, that heightens my concern. Because based on that post, it would seem that wasn't the case.
Right. And again, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a police officer, so I do not know. I just know what I know of the immigrant trust directive, so I'm bringing it to everyone's attention to say, please look into it, please consult, and if I'm wrong, please tell me so. Okay, thank you.
This is the time for persons who submitted a timely written request to address the board on any matter of public interest. Please remember to limit your comments to three minutes. We do have speakers. The first one is Raymond Mitchell.
Chairman, before Mr. Mitchell begins speaking, please note that anyone who's speaking, the, the official timer is not operating properly, so I will be keeping the time. We'll inform the speaker when the three minutes has expired.
It's always something here. All right, so last meeting, we all know that Esther Suarez, she retires supposedly, but then she goes to another law firm. Is any, is everybody aware of that? She retired from here and then she's attending another law firm? I guess everyone knows, right? So I gave notice to Esther Suarez to be here today, Joe Lagangini, to be here. He sits on the judiciary with Brian Stack. Acts for Human Resource. Is she here? I gave notice to her to be here. Not here either about Esther Suarez. Surprisingly, she retires. Jim Tedesco, Bering County Executive, I gave him notice. Debbie White, the union, I gave notice as she covers North Bergen Harbor Bridge and Hagistank Meridian. I also gave notice to Wayne Mello, is he here?
Wayne?
Prosecutor's not here. Captain Signalelli, is he here? Internal Affairs. Will from homicide, the captain, is he here? I also called Governor Murphy's office, gave him notice to be here. So as we continue this on, I have not received any proof that my dad died of COVID. When I have strangle marks on his face, pictures, audio, okay, of the nurse. And how, how does anybody here allow her to retire without giving me my information? Is that a violation of her oath? Anybody? Is it reasonable to say that this is suspicious activity? Whoever's a law enforcement here? Talking about a strangle. Face, neck, aye. COVID. Is Greg Guy here? Is he the law enforcement? Greg Guy, do you have any explanation what's going on with Esther Suarez? Brian Stack, Fanny, I got, uh, the letters from Brian Stack, still waiting on that personnel. Do you, can you tell me that person who I should speak to?
Please, no dialogue.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner.
No, please, no dialogue with the commissioners. Just use your time, please.
Okay, we got Brian Stack, he gives me from Union City Municipal, but then he sends me a letter from his senator office saying he's going to investigate my father's, you know, homicide here. He never did until January of this year, 17 to 25, he puts it in to the Health Department, Human Services. So I, I'm not sure what's going on here, and it also says that 100%, what do I have here? Esther Suarez, oh, wait, Dennis Miller, let me tell you, she, he praised Ms. Suarez for some reason. Dennis Miller, the chief that I have issues with.
Three minutes, Chairman.
All right, three minutes.
Thank you.
That's all I get.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, please note that Commissioner Sefeli just joined us.
Okay, go ahead. Continue with the next.
Next speaker is Courtney Walker.
So am I going to get the COVID information here, anybody?
No.
Yes, maybe so. Next speaker, don't care, but you just keep, didn't she just say about her?
Next speaker, please.
Heard that she said about her some.
Thank you, thank you.
Please take your sign. Next speaker is Courtney Walker.
Go ahead, Ms. Walker, please.
Hello, county commissioners, my name is Courtney Walker and I'm a resident of Jersey City. I'm here today to raise two issues. First, early voting locations. In the June primary, Hudson County had 30, 32 early voting sites, but coverage was unequal. In the north, Union City, Weehawken, West New York, and Gutenberg had over 70% of voters living within one district of a site. In North Bergen, it was 42%. Then Hoboken, only 13% had access, and in East Newark and Harrison, there were none. Coverage was also duplicative. For example, the Summit Ave mobile trailer in Union City was placed right next to the North Bergen Rec Center and Library Site. And the 34th and New York Ave trailer, also in Union City, was right next to Union City City Hall. I've recommended replacing these two duplicative sites with new ones at libraries in Harrison, Hoboken, and Jersey City. That simple change would increase countywide coverage of voters within one district of a site by 4% with no loss of access anywhere. To uphold fairness, I urge you to ensure early voting sites are equitably distributed across all communities. Second, Braddock Park. Last week, a video showed six armed individuals in the park's main lot, two with full face coverings, two with visible ulcers. When asked to identify themselves, they hid from the camera and stayed silent. When a Hudson County sheriff arrived, the officer questioned the person filming instead of the armed group. This raises serious concerns. If those individuals were ICE, failing to identify them undermines the immigrant trust directive and leaves our community unsafe. Public spaces should not be used in this way, and the county urgently needs clear policies for responding when ICE or anyone claiming to be ICE shows up on county property. I'd also urge the county to strongly consider passing a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act, Senate Bill Number S3672A4987. This act establishes protections for immigrants interacting with government agencies and strengthens and codifies the separation between local law enforcement and federal immigration enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Bloomberg. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Could I, had a question? Could you get a, a copy of those two, this is the legislation to me, if I?
Yeah.
Al Borico's getting it too, Bill.
And then on the first item, I think we should have the, whether it's, whether it's Harper or Marion Kelleher, because I 100% agree. There are cities where there's, there are many early voting locations as there are regular, maybe more than actual voting location. And that seems to be totally unfair. And in places like Jersey City, there are certainly not enough of early voting locations, especially in areas where there, where there are both minority and low, low non-income population. So you need an explanation as who makes those decisions, how those decisions are made, and, and quite frankly, if they can't address it, maybe it's something worth even taking legal action. But I think you make a very valid point that people are not being treated equally when it relates to access to, to early voting.
And for next meeting, Abe, just, we're going to have the superintendent of elections on that.
I believe that's, I believe polling places are.
I think it's Mike.
Michael.
Michael Harper.
I think it's Mike Harper.
Thank you.
So have him available for the next call.
Next.
Carney, I'm sorry, Chairman?
Could I ask your question? I'm sorry.
Your right is speaking. Go ahead, your right.
Is the same thing as our assistant to our county executive we're talking about, what you're just talking about, about in person, I?
Yes, same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Oh, Al, do you have a question?
Question, just about, I'm sorry, just backtracking to the voter placements. When I drive through Harrison and Carney, I see that there are voting designations there. Is there, is there a problem with these? I'm, I'm not sure.
Question that the speaker has is in question to the number of locations, and we're going to have for the next meeting, Michael Harper here to tell us.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to push that back till Mike Harper gets here and gives us the, the gritty, right?
And I'm just going to shed a little light, because I've had a discussion with him. If he's going to say that they defer to the local officials, well, that's a pretty damn poor excuse.
That's, that's not, that's unacceptable.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty poor excuse. You know, local, local officials don't want them, then that keeps you, the okay to deprive.
No, my understanding is that the county is, is the responsible party to make there's a fair and equitable distribution of those, those locations.
So we'll have, we'll have Michael Harper here.
Municipalities, I want to hear from us, from Mike.
We'll hear from Michael next meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Mark Bloomberg is the next speaker.
Mark.
Good afternoon. This summer, more than 500 people went on the record to oppose the Braddock Park diversion. As a result of this, as of yesterday, North Bergen withdrew its application from the DEP. So North Bergen, one of the things that North Bergen elected officials mistakenly believe is that the land that the Trailer School is currently on can be left as it is and doesn't have to be opened up for public use. Uh, if you look at the lease that you have with them, that is patently false. So, um, it's the county's responsibility to, to set things straight here at this point, and there are two actions that I feel the county is responsible for. Uh, not the actual actions themselves, but ensuring that their tenant follows these. One is ensuring that the trailers are removed from the park. They're no longer in use. All the preschoolers have been moved out to pre-existing elementary schools as of the start of this school year. Uh, second, making sure that North Bergen actually restores the land for recreation or conservation. Doesn't have to be a softball field like it was, but it's land that's available on it. So my ask is, I wanna know who from the county, I want a name, I want contact information for who is going to basically spearhead this and make sure that North Bergen does this in a timely fashion.
From the best of my knowledge, our Legal Department, Alberico, you would be able to answer that, sir?
Okay, I, is my time stopped?
You have a minute forty-four seconds down.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I just wanna move on to the second topic. Um, you know, I feel like the county needs to start playing offense rather than defense, talking about this immigration issue. Not just what happened at Braddock Park, that's one example. Um, uh, with armed men being in the park, which I'm gonna assume they were actually ICE or law enforcement based on the officer's response to the situation. Uh, regardless of that, the county needs to declare itself as a sanctuary county, just as Jersey City, just as Hoboken has done. Playing defense with this federal administration is bending the knee. Take offense on this. Um, we need to be protecting our residents in county spaces, um, and not empowering, uh, immigration enforcement. Thank you.
Alberico, you see, uh, Mr. Bloomberg after the meeting?
Sure, no problem.
On what you're gonna do.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So you'll give me a name and we'll get this moving forward.
A name of?
So of, of who's gonna take responsibility for making sure that North Bergen vacates the trailers, gets the trailers out, and restores the parkland.
It's not gonna be a name, there's gonna be a concerted effort, this has to take multiple parties, and we're already, as of last night and this morning's news, we're already in the process of handling the situation with all the parties that need to be in, involved.
Okay, I would like.
That means he's the person.
Okay.
No, that means I'm one of the persons.
You're the lawyer.
But I shouldn't have to run around to a consortium of people to keep track of what's going on, and, you know, it would be, you know, there should be a timeline, a project plan.
Let's be complete.
So you're Alexander.
Very communicative with you, myself and Rihanna Garcia have been very good with you.
Okay, well, we'll talk.
I'll continue that.
Thank you.
Alberico, please consider a softball field, we never have enough.
And a soccer field.
Yeah. Greetings, Commissioners. How are you? Sabora Alexander, Hudson County Family Services and Reintegration, President After Me Local sixteen ninety-seven. I'm first here to address Commissioner Copax. I told you I was coming back about that Bayonne parking. So it was brought to my attention by a fellow colleague at work that Jersey City has, uh, zone parking. So I wanted to ask if that's something that could be proposed to the Bayonne residents?
So that's a, this, an issue for the city council?
Okay.
You don't have to tell me, I just, what street you live on around?
I live on Andrew Street.
Andrew, so, yeah, that, that's, uh, the first ward. So that's First Ward Councilman, um, Neil Carroll. So I'll make sure that, uh, you get his contact.
Okay.
And you could reach out to him directly?
Thank you.
That's just not a county issue, you agree, colleagues? Yeah, yeah, I, I wanna be able to help you at that.
Okay, now, it was also suggested that I attend a town meeting, do you think I should?
Yeah, I, I.
A town hall meeting in Bayonne?
The council's very proactive.
Okay.
So I will put you in contact, and that's kinda like borderline first and second, so I don't know exactly where the address is, but I'll give you Jackie Wiemer's number as well, and both of them are very proactive in helping residents, so they'll be able to help you out.
Thank you so much for that. Uh, the second thing I want to address, second and third, actually, is, um, we had a meeting, myself and my board members, with the committee, with the Management Committee, Central Personnel, and I see that Eleanor Gibney, as well as Director Maza Frank is in the building. And I'm coming here because I know that they tried to assist, and I appreciate that, but it doesn't excuse the fact that we're still struggling. So what I proposed was, is there a possibility that the Commissioners could come up with some type of rental stipend for Hudson County Supervisors that reside in Hudson County? Because we are still struggling with our bills. While we just got a raise, we had to take pension loans, and now it's like the raise goes back to the state. Now, Eleanor Gibney did inform me, and I respect that, that, you know, we cannot do intergovernmental transfers. She's the appointing authority, we understand that, but again, it still doesn't excuse the fact that we can't transfer out, and we still can't afford to pay our rent, so where does that leave us as employees? And it's the same with the car mileage, I propose that as well, and now I know from me working not only at the county, but also at Hudson County Corrections, that me personally, I get car mileage because I'm traveling from county to county. But we have, I have members under my local that are traveling from out, you know, out of Hudson County into Hudson County, because they live out of county. And again, they can't transfer into a, you know, position in that county, because we would have to resign and then go from an HSS one, which is like almost taking a fifty thousand dollar pay cut. So I would like to know what can the Commissioners do to help us with this, this situation?
Alberico?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Next speaker.
Kay Daly.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, my name is Kalila Daly, I work for Hudson County Department of Family Services and ABD Department. Tonight, I come bearing gifts, I have no pitchforks or torches tonight. Um, um, I come here to thank you. Um, well, I'm here to thank each of you. Our Director Frank Maza, uh, poor Mr. Maza had to take vacation at the Local Twenty-three oh Six, is a uh, 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 negotiations, well, voting, when we voted. He was running all over the building, and I told him I was gonna speak up and let him know that we appreciated his help. Um, I'm also thanking Eleanor Gibney, Sharon Santana, which works with us at Hudson County Department of Family Services, our union, our union negotiation team, all the members that came here to speak, you know, to, and support us, and all who helped us get this great contract that this local ever had. Um, Hudson County went from being the underdogs of family services to now in this state, the county agency that made history, and you were part of it, as well as all the others that I spoke about. Um, I do have one question, because, um, I was just coming to speak about thanking you. But, um, the human services three, um, workers' position, it, it came up. And the test is still open, and the workers wanna know, will this position actually, uh, will they still be calling people out, because the list is gonna expire soon? So I just wanted to know if that's gonna happen, because people are questioning that, and there was some slack in voting, because people didn't wanna take certain positions, because they were on the list for HSS threes.
We, after the meeting, uh, uh, Director Gibney, can you speak to the Speaker after the meeting?
Do you know when it expires?
I think it expires next year.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, I mean, I guess that's not just Eleanor, it would also be from the administrative side, what they see as the need or demand over time, but it would be, it would be good, it would be good if, if they could try to fill as many spots as they could from the list.
Well, that's, that was a question that was going on through negotiations and voting. So that was a concern from the people, because a great deal of people did take that test. And they didn't wanna, you know, take next level positions that were offered during negotiations behind that. So that's why we wanted to know where that went.
Okay, based on the contract, the, the interest in taking that has changed. Is that a fair way to categorize it?
Well, this is the thing, um, as you know, the HSS ones were actually upgraded to be HSS two provisional.
Correct.
But the ones that took the, the HSS three tests didn't wanna cut themselves off. So they didn't wanna take the HSS two provisions. So that was a, that was a question that people were speaking about, and, you know, were leery about even taking the HSS two positions, because they took the three tests.
Eleanor, after the meeting, you could meet with them, explain the situation.
Yeah, it would be, it would be good to get us a report for the next meeting as to how many individuals would be affected or impacted by, by that, because I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
You know, take a test, because of the, what you see or don't see is gonna happen as a result of it. Why go through it? I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And here it is.
Wow, that's nice.
So, I don't know who to give it to, but.
Give it to the Chairman.
To all, it goes to all, it goes to all. Put it up on the wall.
Put it up on the wall.
Put it up on the wall.
All the Commissioners, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Like that jacket?
Chairman, the last listed speaker is Stephanie Campos.
Stephanie? Just one second, thank you very much on behalf of the Commissioners, it's a beautiful, uh, uh, the wording is what really makes it, and, uh, you're very part of this, not only the county, but of the history of this uh, county government, but your friendship is more important than anything, and the fact that you help so many of our constituents that are in need. God bless you on behalf of all of us.
Chairman.
Passing around somebody. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. Uh, good evening, my name is Stephanie Campos, I am a Jersey City resident. Last week, community members documented armed masked agents who turned out to be ICE staging in Braddock Park. This park is the heart of the majority Latino community, where kids play and families go to work. Throughout the summer, ICE has taken people multiple times from this same park. When a community, when a community member documented the agents in the public parking lot, video shows Officer Santos of Hudson County Sheriff's Department preventing her from filming, allowing agents to photograph her, and telling her, how do you know they are ICE? And apparently later stated, do not interfere. Either the Hudson County Sheriff is okay with armed masked men in our public parks, or he knew they were ICE and was assisting them in violation of the Immigrant Trust Directive. We don't want the Sheriff's Department to support ICE, and we don't want federal agents in our public parks. The asks here are, communicate in a town hall with the sheriff there, the county policies for responding when ICE or anyone claiming to be ICE is on county property. Pass a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. My second point is, this sign was made by an eleven-year-old, a Hut- a Hudson County resident. While she waited for six hours outside Delaney Hall to visit her father, who has now been detained for two months. I understand that this is in Essex County. The cardboard and the markers were provided by volunteers, as were the chairs, the umbrellas, the chair for her to sit on, the snacks for her to eat, an umbrella to block out the sun. We provide these small comforts from our own funds. There is no support from government agencies, understanding that Delaney Hall is in Essex and not Hudson County. Visitors wait hours outside the gate on what is essentially an active driveway on what is known as Chemical Alley, in case you didn't know that. The child's sister is fifteen, and her brother is sixteen. Their dad was the main income earner, who was taken on his way to work. Earlier this week, the sixteen-year-old called to tell me that his family had received an eviction notice. At sixteen, he is looking for ways to raise money to keep his family housed. This is just one story out of so many. Where is the county?
Three minutes, Chairman.
The asks here are, and I'm almost done. Begin an emergency fund for Hudson County families impacted by the detentions. Bring together Hudson County agencies, CBOs, and grassroots organizations in one place to communicate to families what services are available and how to get them. And finally, fund a resource navigator position, even if it's part-time, to help link families to services. Because as of now, volunteers are filling this gap, and it is not sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there are no other speakers, and then.
Just, just to, to the last speaker, I, I, uh, I agree with what you said, and we spoke earlier, we had an item today on the agenda, and I thought somebody was gonna be here from that organization. One New Jersey. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I missed, you know, you didn't tell me you were here. So, so the other day, one of the questions we have is we've found, and it, it addresses uh, some of the comments of the prior speaker. As we've attempted to have events to notify individuals of their rights and services we could provide to them, we find it difficult to get people to come, for the exact reason that you talked about going on in, in, in Braddock Park, and that people are afraid to literally go to an information session, to try to tell them what rights they could have, or what help we could provide them, because of fear that, um, someone, ICE may be outside looking to, to, to grab whoever goes there. And, and that's a challenge, but a challenge that we have to figure out a solution to, because that, that's difficult. I did a, I did an interview with the, um, President of the State Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and they've shown a serious decline in, in, um, sales in Hispanic bodegas and Hispanic businesses, which they tie directly to individuals' fear to even go to a store um, in, in their community for what might happen. So, uh, I understand, and, and, and I'm sympathetic to, but I had asked you to come here today, because much of the services you provide, or, or some of the services you, you provide in the past have always been focused on helping individuals gain permanent status, helping individuals with status go on and gain their citizenship. But obviously, in today's climate, some things have changed, and the need for you to provide services for individuals who, whatever. Um, an expired work visa, uh, 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 overextended student visa, there's so many other categories of individuals that have nowhere to go, and may not have the financial resources to do it. And, and my question is, or two, one is how you can provide those kinds of services, and I know to some degree you already are, but secondly, and this goes into more global, what the prior speaker said, how do we create a system of how we're able to not only reach those individuals, but assist those individuals at a time and climate where fear, fear within those communities are so great, the one example you cited in, in, in Braddock Park is only one example, but the fear is so great that if we had an event here tomorrow, saying, come if you're, if you're, if, you, you know, you, you may get service providers to come, but if you ask the individuals to come who are affected, many, many, if not most, would say, if I go there, what's gonna stop when I leave or when I come? An ICE agent waiting to check who I am and potentially take me away? So we've gotta figure out how we overcome that, because if we don't, then we, then they, they've won, and we're losing. So I think that, that, that should be part of a bigger, a bigger discussion, but on the question I have uh, asked about what is your capacity to provide those services for individuals that fall into categories that technically, technically today, if someone stopped them, oh, your work visa expired last month, let's go. What, what, how are you able to help them, and then how are we able to create a way to reach out to those individuals where they're gonna be able to get service without having fear of coming to your office?
We have to, we have to.
We need the Speaker's name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Julia Bernal, and I'm the Executive Director of We Are One New Jersey. We are a nonprofit organization that, uh, provides educational and immigration services to the residents of Hudson County. Um, so to address your question of how our services have shifted, as you're aware, in the past, we have provided services to facilitate um, individuals becoming, um, United States citizens through the. um, United States citizens through the naturalization process. We have, um, comprehensive services, meaning we not only, um, uh, help in filling out the paperwork, but we also, um, provide citizenship classes, mock interviews. Um, and then once the person has become a citizen, we, um, help them, um, fill out the application for their, um, passport, as well as voter registration, um, the change of status with social security, um, and all the things that come with knowing how to assimilate to being a U.S. citizen. Um, in addition to that, we also help with green card renewals and work permit renewals, and also with deferred action. Um, in the past year, since the change of administration, we have also, um, added to our educational services, um, Know Your Rights sessions um, across the county, um, and also in places of work and education, educational institutions. Um, this is as far as we've been able to get, um, with what our staff can do and also the budget that we have. Um, but we have serviced, done many, many Know Your Rights sessions. We have trained individuals in their, um, work areas, be it at daycares or schools, or, um, we have been, um, contacted by individual, um, businesses to train their employees. Um, so it's, it's different kind of trainings depending on what the facility is. But we have been reaching out to the community. I do want to point out that, um, as Commissioner O'Day said, um, in various Know Your Rights sessions open to the public, we have had people not show up. We did hold one very early, um, in the change of administration. I believe it was in the first two weeks of the change of administration and we had only three individuals show up out of fear, um, the room was empty. And then we also held one, um, just to compare like the trajectory, we also held one, um, earlier, um, I want to say it was already summer at Team Walker, which is another nonprofit organization. They hold a, um, they hold a, uh, farmer's market on Saturdays and we teamed up with them in order to do our session after the farmer's market to draw people in. And what happened was people came for the farmer's market. They didn't want to stay, they didn't feel safe staying, um, even though they trusted the organization. And the organization trusted us to deliver the message, but people just did not feel safe um, in the fact that they knew that there had been dissemination of this session happening at that site. And so at that point, I think that people feel unsafe being in places where it's common knowledge that this is the topic of discussion. Um, so in that case, um, we ended up, um, doing a Facebook Live for the session. But again, there was very little to none turnaround, because.
So could you, when, could you, uh, send to, uh, all the Commissioners emails, the, your contact info also, what you just summarized, uh, the programs that you do, so we're all aware of it and how to get in contact?
Absolutely.
And, and I was in no way being critical, you did one with, with me at County Plaza
Yeah.
early on.
Yeah.
And I know we similar had a problem.
Yeah.
Getting people to come. We got some service providers to come.
Right.
It was good to get them information. But if you need additional resources to put up something together, you should let us know. I mean, this is, this is a crisis, right? Let's make no mistake about it. It's a crisis. And one thing I learned is somewhere, somehow, somebody's figured out a way to get the message to everybody they need to get the message in some part of this country. So with this stuff now, you can figure it out. So I think whether, whether it's from the, from the activists or from the office, just everybody put their heads together, because we gotta find a way to do that. And some may be through groups, right? So I work closely with HACCA, which is, um, Dominican-based business association. If somebody gets their leadership, that information, they could probably go business by business, store by store, on what Know Your Rights is to do that. Again, that's just one out of a, out of a hundred different ways. But I think it would make sense for you to put together a plan. If it create, requires resources, then the worst we could do is say no. But if you never ask.
Right.
So because it's, it doesn't seem like it's gonna get better. It seemed like it's gonna get worse. And, and, and delaying, you know, letting people know what their rights are, creating as much protection and assistance as is humanly possible, we have to do. But I don't, I know people who, who've lived in the country twenty-five years, but technically are here illegally.
Right.
They live here, they work here, their kids go to school here, their, 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 their spouse is a citizen. But every day, they live in that fear that tomorrow, for whatever reason, I don't know. They, 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 the, the, they went thirty miles an hour on a twenty-five mile an hour zone in the wrong town. Or, you know, so I, I just think that we, from our, from our perspective, need to provide if there's additional resources for you to do what your job is, because you, what you do is so much change, right? In just one year.
Yeah.
What your main focus is, is changing, figuring out how people can easily access, working maybe with advocates, a trust level, whether it's done remotely. Because people are even afraid if it's remotely, somebody can find out where I am, right? If you're in fear, those are the kind of things you're afraid of, but.
And we'll work on it.
If I may.
Like this latest too.
I, I think that there is a, especially a need to, um, contact employers. I think because the, this is people's places of work. And so if something could be done in terms of education, especially for the employers, um, there's a, there's a big need for that. Like I, I find that very many employers don't even know the difference between a, a judicial warrant and an ICE warrant. And it's important that they know that difference, um, because ICE is using the administrative warrants um, in order to gain access, so.
Again, we got a Chamber of Commerce in Hudson County. We've got, I think a majority of our cities in Hudson Counties have urban enterprise zones. They have list directories and each of those towns can do informational session for businesses and employers. That's a great idea. So I think that would be something, we should put a, plan a proposal together and we should run with it.
And I can always help you with Hudson County Chamber, okay? Thank you. And if anybody wants to speak to you after the meeting, please.
Okay.
Uh, two, two announcements, uh, we have two birthdays. September fifth, Commissioner Yuridolitsky turned twenty-five. And on September twentieth, Commissioner Carey Dad turned eighteen. So happy birthday. All in favor? Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.